And broadcast by W A C A and we thank them for that. If anybody else is recording this. They need to let the chair know so that I can announce to everyone. That's the policy under the open meeting law. But with that said, our agenda tonight, we have a continued public hearing. On a proposed apartment building at twenty nine and forty one Alden Street. That's seven thirty and at eight fifteen. We have the continued public hearing on eighty one West Union Street. That's the mixed use development. Next to the storage facility kind of in front of the middle school. And that is other than some administrative matters and such, that is our agenda for tonight. So Peter, we are not scheduled to actually start this until seven thirty for Alden Street. So if there's something else we can do first as far as minutes or anything like that that we have.
So I think we were still waiting on the minutes and we did not send those. Did we send those?
No, they have, they have the minutes, March twelfth. It was in the email.
We can go through, we can go through the minutes as a board then.
Yeah, that'd be the best thing to do with our time right now. Yeah, so these are the minutes of March twelfth. I apologize, I'm not set up for sharing my screen here. Otherwise I would and we'd all be able to see them.
Preston, do you want me to share mine?
If it's convenient, go ahead.
Sure. Rule forty four, page one. There was a brief conversation. About on-street parking, the applicants striped, to be mean, strike their surface spaces.
It's spelled stripe instead of strip.
And I think you just needed to put these covered porch amendment under F floor area ratio. Just needs to do that. What do you mean by this? October twenty four, twenty twenty.
That hasn't happened yet, so I think we can take that out.
I think so too. I knew it hadn't happened.
That should be twenty nineteen.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought we dealt with some old minutes. Yep. Okay. That's it.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty with corrections?
Go move, Dale Buchanan.
Second.
All right, because we are doing remote, we'll take a roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Fisher Kendall, aye.
Sir Williams, aye.
Don Rubertone, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. That's five zero, that passes. All right, nice to have that taken care of. Still have four minutes before we can start our seven thirty item. Do we have, Peter, do we have any other administrative things to take care of tonight?
No, not on the. No, not right now. I think right now everyone is. Just moving forward and trying to keep things afloat. We do have open meetings, we have no new cases and we have no new submitted in our plans. Town meeting has been pushed back into June. I believe in the selectmen are working to find the date. So at our next meeting, we did advertise two zoning changes. One was to correct a, two, there are two very small zoning changes. One was to correct a definition. With the typo and then the other one is to correct another typo in regards to the design review committee. And how it kind of, in how it reflects another section of the bylaw. So those are the two items that we're looking to kind of take care of. I think we've pushed all other large zoning matters. To hopefully which will be the fall town meeting. After, you know, as we deal with the state of emergency.
Okay. I should actually let people know, actually Peter let me know, there was a, there's been a lot of new legislation. For how to deal with this emergency. And in one of those pieces of legislation. It addressed how planning boards can deal with cases. And essentially, if I understand it correctly, the chair is authorized to. Postpone or extend anything till up to forty five days past whenever the state of emergency ends. So we don't have to ask for extensions from developers. And we can reschedule things as needed. At least that's my understanding. Peter, is that your understanding as well?
Yeah, so that is correct. So last Friday, the legislature came out and they issued a new order. And it pretty, and allowed all permitting boards within the state of Massachusetts. So under that purview would be planning board, zoning board, and conservation commissions. And it gives, pretty much it stops the tolling period and or what also people know is the clock. And so it really kind of stops the clock on all applications. And it's really negating from the, the process of. Elected of, I'm sorry, I'm missing, I'm fumbling my words here. It really, it kind of gets away from a constructive approval process, which a lot of planners and a lot of planning boards were worried about. Concerning subdivisions, A and R processes and obviously special permits and site review processes. But here with the new order, the town, the all towns and. La- land use regulating boards have the ability to, to continue hearing applications. Via Zoom or any other, you know, online mechanism. But that tolling period has stopped. And so, and so that would obviously protect all planning boards and ZBAs from. Constructive approval processes. And so that's a big relief. Moving forward, I would say. So once the state of emergency is lifted. Which obviously no one knows when that is going to happen. Then the planning board and or zoning board would have to schedule their meeting within forty five days. Of that mechanism, or I would say of that trigger. And then that tolling period would kind of start back up again.
Okay, and with that, it is now seven thirty. So we can begin with the. Twenty nine and forty one Alden Street project. And I know they had a good designer review meeting last week, which I had the pleasures of joining. And they made some changes and I would like them to present to the board what those changes are.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Well, for the record, my name is Terry Morris. I'm the attorney representing the project and the development team. My office is fifty seven Elm Road in Newton. I think that we started with the promise that we heard what the board had said two weeks ago. And that there were some concerns about the size and height of the building principally focused on the fourth story. And the, and the overall height. We're looking for relief up to forty three feet in height. We made a sincere effort to try to address this concern from the bottom and from the bottom up. By the bottom up, I mean, we, we look to try to bury the parking, which is at the first level of the building is largely parking. And that would have required us to do an excavation to get down, create a ramp going down under the building to provide access to the parking. We looked at the, we ran into, we counted two different problems. The first was that we ran into a high water table which presented us from going. Too deep. And the second thing was that the end result was to severely change the look and feel of the site plan. We would have created a huge excavation at the back of the site resulting in an eight foot, eight to ten foot retaining while running approximately thirty feet along the left side of the property. We then discovered when we were at the design review committee meeting that that, that change, had we affected that, would have had a further effect of jeopardizing the root system of the very mature trees that. Are located at that, that corner of the property, on adjacent properties. We then next took a look at lowering the, the roof, the ridge line. There was a lot of discussion at the last meeting about the parapet. As you know, the parapet is four and a half feet high and it's there largely to shield the solar panels and the mechanical systems from view on, from the street. We did make an effort and we presented drawings. That showed the effect of removing the parrot, first of all, and the secondly of lowering the roof line. And that affected that, once you, one of the principal elements of this building and the one that we hope to make it most complete, most compatible contextually. With the downtown district is the significance of the gable ends. The, the building presents itself with gable ends to the street and it also presents it to the, to the, to the neighborhood, to the left of us and on all, all sides of the building. Principally, the gables that are shown on the street reflect the present forty three foot height of the present existing commercial building. At twenty nine Alden Street. And it was there that we basically, that size and the, the shape of that building informed the architectural design. Once we, once we started thinking about removing the parapet, that would have altered the ridge line and it dramatically, it dramatically changed. The, the pitch of the roof in order to maintain something close to the pitch of the roof that we had, was quite attractive and quite prominent. It would have us narrowing, narrowing certain elements on the building. And that effect was to, that's the view from the front, the view from the side. Was that it flattened the building out where you virtually had, were looking at a. Back from, from the street, you would have been looking at what would appear to be, have been a flat roofed building. So for that reason, the only thing we're able to do is really affect the height of approximately two feet from what we had proposed, proposed originally. There were several other issues. I'll come back to, to the, to the height in a minute and how we, how we, well, I might as well go to it right now. We. There's an element of the building, the building, if you look at it from the street, reads like a three-story building. And what I mean by that is there's a ground floor elevation which masks the parking and has the entrance to the building, the lobby. There are then two stories of residential use that have, have featured by windows and fenestration. But the fourth floor is largely disguised behind the pitch of the, the gable roof. There are no dormers, there are no windows and for all outward appearances, it looks like a three-story building. The one thing that belies that is if you look down the driveway, you will see, you can see an element of the building that is. That is visible from the street at the very far corner. That element was representative of full story effect. And it's the one thing that basically, when you looked at it, you'd say, oh, it is a four-story building. And it does project eighteen feet beyond the face of the, the rest of the building, eighteen feet closer to the residential neighborhood. So we recognized that we had to do something substantial or something significant, concrete, no pun intended, that we had to. Take something off the building, so we, we, we lopped that element off the building. We took it off completely. Brought the face of the building back eighteen feet further away from the neighborhood and made it on the same plane as the side elevation of the building. So that if you're looking down this, down the driveway towards the back of the site, you would see the building had been shortened from a hundred and six feet down to eighty eight feet. Significantly impacting the visual impact from the street and we hoped the massing of the building. We then turned to one other issue that was brought up by several members of the board and that was regarding the stacked parking. As you know, we had employed stack parking on a prior project that was approved by the board and we had hoped that. It would have been well received here, but we understand there were some concerns because we had not yet constructed that building and therefore they, I think it was. Mr. Rubertone who said it's unfortunate that we haven't built the building where we had some track record to deal with the impact of stacked parking. So what we did was we revised it and I, Rick, are you, I can't see if the plans are up on the board. Are we sharing the screen?
I don't have the ability to share it yet.
You don't have the ability to share it yet, okay.
Yeah, Preston's gonna have to make Rick a co-host.
Oh, I thought, I thought that Emma was gonna make Rick a co-host.
We, Emma is me, Emma's, Emma and I are co-hosts and Preston's gonna have to make him a co-host.
Okay. Okay, well, I do my, do my best to continue the description and hopefully when we have video of the planes, we'll be able to recap.
Who is Rick on the?
Rick Salvo is our civil engineer.
Oh, our Salvo, okay.
Yep, sorry.
So we did turn to the parking and we found that, that we opted to eliminate the stack parking and go to tandem parking. So tandem parking is significant because it allowed us to do two things, achieve two benefits that improve the project. The first was, we had largely hoped that, oh, here we are. So as you can see, there's, there's a view of the, of the. First floor plan. We've now shown parking, most of the parking has always been from the outset and continues to be within the building, out of sight. And enabling us to maximize the green space in the site plan. Having the tandem parking instead of the stack parking. We think is, makes it more likely that residents of the building who may only need one automobile, but yet have the, a, a second space, have access to a second space. Would have that spec and space available for visitors to use. And we recognize that the ability to function as visitor space for stack, stack parking was problematic in that regard. Because it's not realistic to expect visitors to building to be moving cars around mechanically to, to park in, in the garage. But the more, more significant for the site plan and it was particularly. Complimented by the design review committee was on the left-hand side of the building, you will recall that we previously had an exit drive. We had a two-way entrance in and out of the building on the left and on the right, we had an exit drive creating two curb cuts on the street. Well, we've eliminated that second curb cut, which we think does two things. It actually makes. Tra- access and egress to the site safer because now there's one less curb cut. And you will recall that the existing plan was basically virtually one large curb cut because there was no distinction between the paved area on the site. And the delineation of the street adjacent. And now we've, we've certainly, as we pointed out at the last meeting. We have, we are installing a sidewalk which gives a pedestrian connection that is one of the objectives of the Ashland Downtown District. But again, I call your attention to the right hand of the site where we've eliminated all of that asphalt and it is now a green space. And it, and now allows us to control the access in and out of the site at one century, entry point to the left, to the left of the site. So those are the two significant things that we made that with respect to the, the site plan and the interior of the building. You can see, looking at the, the plan view, how the element that I talked about, which used to project much further, you know, into, to the. Losing my direction, I'm further south is now had been brought back. And I guess if, Rick, if we can go to a elevation view or a. A rendering, there we go, that's a good, that's back to the other one. You'll see that the plane of that element has been, from the second, third and fourth level has been brought back on a par with the rest of the building, thereby reducing the impact visually of the mass of the building. It also enabled us, we still have a ground element there which we, which we retained to provide. Pedestrian access within the building and that now becomes an additional green roof. All of these changes now. As with, with regards to parking, we now still have a surplus of parking over what is required under the, under the zoning. We had twenty seven spaces plus another. What do we have outside? We have. Slow down, I think we still have the seven spaces on the outside, so we still have thirty four spaces to accommodate the nineteen units. Thirty five spaces, excuse me. Rick, if you could show a, on one of the previous versions, the, the, look down the, down the driveways. Where I was trying to explain how we, the visual impact of the change we made.
So this is the current, this is the revised plan?
Right.
This is the previous plan?
That's the previous, when you can see, it's a significant, we believe that's a significant reduction in the mass. It also meant that, and, and the F A I had been reduced as well. So not only was it a, a, an aesthetic move, it was function, you know, it was volume wise, it was a significant element to take off of the building. That represents my, any questions? That, I think, that concludes my overall picture of the changes that we made. I guess I'll now turn it over to either Rick or Ron to elaborate on any points that I might have made for the benefit of the board.
I think you pretty well nailed it, Terry. I guess a couple of the, the smaller changes.
Landscaping.
That were, that were made, there were some landscape changes made that there was a tree removed from this area here. I think we all kind of, and we verified these. These plantings in here would be shade tall enough to handle the, the off-site trees that are behind it. There was granite curbing here, you know, so even though snow's gonna be pushed here, you know, the plows aren't gonna be able to mount it and get up into there. Two pocket parks, as we saw before, was still with the three, street trees. I've also added to the plan now, you could see the, there could be a possibility of having as many as five on-street parking spaces. In this stretch, one of which, if so desired, could be designated as handicapped, ideally this one, which would be right in front of the. The entryway to the building. There was also requests for, for, which doesn't really show on this graphic, but it's on the site plan. For us to be able to obtain some historical data regarding these, these buildings and put some signage in front of each one of these parks. That just kind of describes a little bit of the history of the buildings and, and where they originated from. The configuration of the bike storage over here is, is slightly changed. And, and I think beyond that, you know, the stormwater is still the same as what it was. And the overall layout is still the same as what it was. I don't know if, Ron, if you wanted to add at all to. The architectural changes, we, we picked up an extra green roof over here. So there'll be a green roof in the back, green roof here and green roof at this balcony level, but I guess I'll let Ron talk about any of the other architectural features that Terry might have missed.
Or Rick, before you leave that, I think maybe you could expand upon whatever, the point I was trying to make about the impact of having to create that ramp going down if we had to excavate. On the back part of the site, how that would have impacted the, the site plan essentially on that side of the building.
Yeah, so, so, so as you can see, our garage level is, is at the same level as the front door entry point. As anyone knows, the site, even though there's a little bit of change in grade there, there's a little mound on the left-hand side, but for all intensive purposes, this is a pretty flat site. So to put a drive under situation in there would be basically battling the existing topography. You know, we'd be building retaining walls and having a steep ramp to get down eight feet to get this whole building pushed down into the ground. It really doesn't lend itself to have underground parking. Because if you did underground parking. To have um, underground parking, because if you did underground parking, ideally you'd want your entry level to be up at this level here. It just really didn't work with the site. We were successful um. With the grade plane calculation. Um, and some modifications to the building and resetting the garage floor elevation. Um, to lower the building. Um, so it's about two feet lower than the existing building now. We were about the same as the existing building. Um, now, um, as you can see, we've got a um, average grade of one eighty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, by the definition and the zoning of the grade plane. Um, which yields a building height of forty-one feet. You might recall, we were forty-two feet, uh, four inches. Um, in the, in the uh, previous design. Um, so we weren't able to lower the building by about a foot. Um, with these changes, but what. What Terry alluded to, we did go through a whole exercise of doing what we could to try to get this building down. Under forty feet and um, it just wasn't possible. Um, without either A, destroying the um, architectural look at the building that's been created. Or B, um, just creating a scenario that really doesn't make sense. By building a whole bunch of retaining walls around the site and having a deep excavation for an underground parking scenario.
Thank you, Rick.
Ron, did you want to add anything before we turn it back for questions?
Where'd Ron go?
Is Ron muted?
Ron, you here? It's too early for a bathroom break.
Oh, Ron's muted. Oh, there you go.
Um. Did you find him?
Yeah, he's there. He said one minute.
Well, while we're waiting for Ron to come on, you can see from this vision here. You can see that the prominent feature that the gable ends make on both sides of the building that you can see. Had we had to lower that ridge line, it would have flattened out those, uh, the pitch of those. The only alternative to doing that to in order to maintain a similar pitch would have been to narrow. The projections on the front of the building where you see that those elements pop out. And that would have eliminated again, uh, an architectural feature that most people have uh, thought was well received. Well, I guess we might as well take questions from the board.
Okay, well, I've got a couple of um, simple ones we'll start off with. Um, I like the reduction of impervious surface uh, with the elimination of the second driveway. Uh, but my recollection was that there was a Coltech chamber underneath. The uh, that driveway in the previous plan. Is that correct? Is there, did you reduce the water storage or was it all over on the other side?
Uh, it's all over on the other side. The, the um, Coltech chamber that was on this side was specifically for draining that driveway. So now that that driveway is gone and it's pervious, there was no need for it.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to be clear that we were losing some of the underground drainage in the process of losing the driveway also. Um, and I assume you've done the calculations and our peer review will verify that it's still good.
Yes, they went hand in hand. So none of the roof was directed to there. All of the roof was handled um, in the cell system. Along with this part of the driveway. So when this impervious surface went away, there was no need for that system.
Okay, and at the design review, uh, if you can go to this, actually, on this slide. On the um, upper left, where you've got that little bump out. The design review was concerned that with the staircase there. Uh, that the bump out in the. Yeah, that, that, that with the staircase there. That the bump out shown on the outside in the renderings might have to be taller to accommodate that staircase. Uh, can you address that? Is the rendering correct in the height?
I can, I can address that. I, I don't know where Ron is, but. That was one of the first things that Ron addressed. He basically brought the stairway into the inboard of the bill, uh, inboard of the building. Uh, to address that concern. As you can see, it's now pulled back on this view. I think that's the first, is that the first floor plan, Rick?
This is the ground floor plan?
Second floor plan, yeah.
This is the second floor plan?
So now that, on the second, right, on the second floor.
Right here.
On the second floor, that staircase is entirely within the, within the building.
Okay, yeah, so the, the outside rendering now agrees with the.
Did not change.
The height of that, the height of that element is exactly as was represented at the design review committee meeting.
Okay, and I noticed uh, one of the designer view recommendations was to show. The trees on the neighboring property on the plans of, so that we'd be aware of the. Uh, the root impacts, and I think uh, you have those there. Is that correct?
Yep, these are them right there.
Rick?
Yes, they're right here.
There they are.
They're showing in grayscale along the edge. They're about three feet off the property line, off the fence line, excuse me.
Preston?
Yes.
It's Kathy Rooney. I'm just curious what happened to the rest of them on the back property line, especially in the southwest corner. Cause there's a whole bunch of them.
All right here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. I had nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen of them.
Go to the right-hand side. There's a whole bunch on that side too. There's left.
We didn't locate these just because there's such an enormous dip. Um, there's no work going on here and there's such, there's setbacks so far, we didn't locate them all.
Okay, well, I'd ask for them all to be located because then you can do your sun and shade analysis that way. And so, and everybody else can see them.
Uh, other comments from the board?
Um, while, while this diagram's up. So that um. Uh, the upper left corner in this diagram, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not good with the directional, yeah. So that's where the sto- snow storage is gonna be. Um, and you guys look, look, you've done some thoughtful planning there, looking at the, the shade line and so forth. Um, any concerns to the viability of those plants, even with snow storage there, even with a granite curb that's gonna limit real, real stacking? Is that a?
Two thing, two things, Mr. Ruberton. Uh, the first thing is that Rick would, can explain that. Uh, under his auspices, that landscape was prepared and we did present to the. Uh, design review committee that the plantings were carefully selected. To be uh, resistant to um, having snow placed in that area. Notwithstanding that fact, we had, we've long since said that we would agree to a condition. That would require us to take the snow off-site after, beyond a certain uh, snowfall.
They'll all be dormant in the wintertime though, and they're all salt tolerant. Um, they, they were designed to be in a snow storage um, area specifically.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I have a question. How possible is it for cars in the right-hand most parking spaces? How possible is it for them to get out if the parking lot is full?
I, uh, it's my understanding, it's not dimension on this plan, I, I think it's a dimension on the first floor plan. Typical dimensions for a parking facility, if you have a double-loaded uh, parking facility, is to have an aisle width of twenty-four feet. And I believe that is the distance that we have here, which technically would allow people to back, that distance allows you to back straight out. And then take your left or right-hand turn to exit, rather than having to back out at an angle.
Plus, it's a twenty-foot long space or a forty-foot long space in this case, but two. So there's plenty of room for, with the twenty-four-foot aisle width. And a twenty-four-foot, and a twenty-foot space, because you technically have. Two more feet than you would have, say, at the mall where those are nine-by-eighteen spaces in most scenarios with the twenty-four-foot aisle width. But there's plenty of room for a vehicle to back straight up, turn and be able to get out.
So these are the full ten-foot wide parking spaces?
They are, ten by twenty, according to the dimensions in the bylaw.
And now, so all the parking's on one level, right? So there's no ramps in there of?
Nope, no ramps, no lifts, just.
Get to the lobby.
But it's all tandem parking.
And, and just remind us, what is the number of required spaces and the number of spaces provided?
Thirty-five spaces are required and the computation is. Two spaces per nineteen would be thirty-eight, but under the, in this ad district. You're allowed to go to seventy-five percent of the requirement, so seventy-five percent of the thirty-six would be a twenty-nine. And we're providing thirty-five.
Uh, if I count that right, uh, if we were to. If, if we had some rule that said the double parking spaces. You only get a half-space credit for the second space, you would still meet the requirement, it looks like.
Uh, I'd have to, I'd have to do the math, Mr. Chairman. Two, four, seven, ten. Thirteen, six and a half. Yeah, it would be three, six and a half spaces. It would be uh, we'd be right there, it'd be twenty-nine.
Yeah, because.
There are twelve, there are twelve tandem. There are twelve tandem spaces, and if you counted each one of them half, that would be six. And, and that, instead of having, showing twenty-nine, I mean thirty-five, you'd show twenty-nine.
Because as with the lifts, the, the tandem parking is not as usable as fully independent spots. So if we, you know, I, I like to think of them as half-spots and the math still works out according to the requirements. If we think about it that way, so that's good.
Yes, yes, yes. As I said, there were twelve tandem. If you treat them as six. That would mean the number of spaces that we have within the garage is twenty-one and we have uh, eight outside. Excuse me, four, we have, we have twenty, twenty-two in the garage and eight outside.
Okay. Any other thoughts from the planning board, or should I open it up for?
I would, I would just briefly say, say that, you know, appreciate you guys being responsive to. Our comments around this and, and um, you know, it, you know, in the fullness of time, it, it may be. You know, we may look back at this, but um, but I appreciate you guys taking the initiative and, and, and. You know, trying to look at this another way and trying to find another way to make it work in light of, in light of um, some of the comments. Um, appreciate that.
After we're done with that, then I'd like to say some stuff, but I'll listen to public comment first.
Uh, anyone uh, from the public have a comment? Uh, you can just, as long as it's not too many, people can just unmute and announce.
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Mark.
I, I'd like to say, thank you for the vast improvements they did. And uh, what, what was said before about the outside, the park and, and the. Design outlooks, but I like to go back to the uh, inside diagram of the parking. Then you got the yellow color that's in the middle, that was in the middle, showing off the ten-by-twenty spots. But he had the arrows in the middle.
This one?
Yeah. Now, my, I, I like the idea with the, oh, exiting out to the uh, to the rights, to the left side, rather. But I was just wondering if it was ever cons, was it ever considered that the right side with those two arrows are going either way? Was there a considering exit to go out to the, where the green is to the right? So it'd be like split tra- yeah, right down there. To come down, instead of having that green, there'd be a little more of the um. Driveway itself to come down there to split the traffic flow. That's my only question for now. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the reality is, um, although the traffic flow could be split that way. Um, given the proximity of those two driveways, you wouldn't really have a, a huge benefit of um, splitting the traffic. Um, you know, given this is a nineteen-unit building. It, it's gonna be a rare occurrence that someone is coming and going at the exact same time. I mean, it will happen, but it's gonna be a rare occurrence.
Okay, uh, is there anybody else who has a comment? Uh, if anybody is watching. Uh, through a live stream through WACA. Um, I think they, they may be live streaming this on Facebook as well as um. Online, I, on uh, the cable access. Uh, you, if you want to participate, you do need to connect uh, through Zoom. Uh, there is also a phone, you can connect both through your computer uh, or through phone. Um, uh, Peter, do you have the phone instructions for anybody who might be?
Yep, so if you're wa- so if you're watching this at home, the phone number to participate in this meeting. Is one, six, four, six, five, five, eight. Eight, six, five, six, and then the meeting ID number, which will, you'll be asked, which will be prompted to type in. Is six, zero, one, zero, eight, nine, two, zero, three. And then to raise your hand uh, to the code, to the host, who is Preston Crowe, chairman of the planning board, is star, I believe, six. And to mute yourself, it is star nine.
All right. Um, yes.
Kathy Rooney, so um, I have some comments from design review. Um, that I believe I heard the developer say they would do. Um, and I sent along. Uh, planting, tree shrub, vine planting diagrams. Uh, to be included on their um, landscape list. Uh, because they're the best management um, practices. Which involve things like, um, and also a mulching diagram. There's a couple of different ones that involve taking the burlap and wire basket off. Not using volcano mulch on trees, things like that. And I didn't hear anything from the developer about that at this meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that those. Had been sent along to the planning board and that they would be included. As part of the planning board's recommendations.
Yes.
Great.
We, we have a um, in our packet uh, that was emailed to us, we have the design review committee. Uh, recommendations that include all of those items. I assume uh, the applicant has seen those. And uh, it, and I assume the applicant would be. Uh, satisfied with the planning board listing all of those as conditions on the approval?
Yeah, and uh, we have not received them, but I'd be happy to add those details onto the plan. We're happy for you to make it a condition, but if you want me to memorialize on the plan, which is probably the best approach. If someone could send them along to me, we'd be happy to, to place them on the uh, plan. Kathy, I should note too, we did also. Swap out the grasses. We put the um, the broadleaf um. Evergreen um, in there. I'm, I'm sorry, the, the, I think it was a flowering broadleaf evergreen, I forget, off the top of my head. And we did change these trees from the Chanticleer pears. I don't know if you saw that.
What did you change them to?
The, our landscape architect hesitated to change to the, to the. Dogwood because she didn't think that, in her opinion, they made good street trees. They were changed to the Japanese lilac tree, the ivory silk.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
A- as we had kind of discussed.
Yeah, that'll look fine.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I could ask, I know you were present at the design review committee meeting, but yeah, uh, did you receive, you, you indicated you received a written recommendation from the. From the committee.
We have that in our packet. We, we should make sure that you get a copy.
Is uh, is it possible to read some summary of that into the record?
Uh, sure, um. Committee arrived at the following recommendations, uh, site and landscape recommendations. Uh, replace all pear trees with different non-pear trees, uh, such as those dogwoods. Uh, replace Texas media in front of the building with a flowering broadleaf evergreen. Ensure that the planting plan and details conform to the planting diagrams, plans found in the draft designer view guidelines appendix. Uh, include an interpretive sign in. Uh, include an interpretive sign in one of the pocket parks showing the historic buildings that formerly occupied the site and how architectural details from those buildings are incorporated in the current buildings. Uh, complete a sun and shade analysis to account for the shade from, uh, from the trees behind the property. A mulch according to the mulch diagrams, not volcano mulch around the trees found in the draft DRC guidelines appendix. Uh, show trees on adjacent property on, uh, show trees and adjacent to the property on the plan so that the critical root zones of tr, the trees can be considered when building. No excavating or major work is currently planned for the perimeter of the parcel. And then, uh, building recommendations, uh, the committee requests the plans accurately show the stair tower based on the interior run of the stairs, which I brought up earlier and you've addressed.
I do.
And that's it.
Well, I think that pretty much, that pretty much re, matches our, what we remember, uh, uh, stating and agreeing to, uh, at the meeting. So we're happy to have all of those things incorporated into any decision that you might make.
Uh, town planner Peter Magic Preston, I have a quick question just for the applicant Terry. Um, regarding the parking, uh, in the, in the basement, obviously in, in the bottom floor, how are they gonna be assigned to each unit? Are the two bedroom units gonna have a tandem parking spaces?
Yeah, the, the predominant number, I think, three quarter, three quarters of them, I think, are, are two bedroom units. Um, I don't know, perhaps Charlie could speak to that, but I, I, not to steal his thunder, but oftentimes you, you, uh, you unbundled the parking, you basically assign the parking as needed. So, so that, uh, you have the, the flexibility to have spaces reserved for, for visitors or not, depending upon the needs of the occupants.
Yeah, just with this, cause obviously with this develop, you know, with the development and you're doing the tandem parking, I'm just thinking, you know, obviously it'd be great to say, yeah, that's gonna be a visitor spot. This is gonna be for a resident. However, you know, somebody's gonna have their, you know, second car, right in the back tandem spot. And then you would want another resident from another unit coming in and blocking that person in.
Oh, no, they, you wouldn't do that. No, I can, I can safely say that would not happen. We would, uh, in all likelihood, there would be, you know, one spa, at least one space available, uh, to each automobile that's freely, uh, accept, that's freely accessible, either because the space in front of it is, they own the space in front of it or, or rented, whatever, excuse me. Or it is, uh, or it is, uh, vacant, you know. We have. Can, can I speak for a second on that? So basically. You would. Each, each, the, each tandem space is gonna go to one unit, either a one bedroom or two bedroom, depending on what they need for parking. I'd li, I'd like to add one thing too, because we were talking about the, um, historical stuff in the pocket pack, the signs. Uh, Kathy Rooney offered to do the, uh, research on the, the historical ends of the buildings and she's, I'm grateful she's gonna be working with me to, um, to design the, the pockets to go out in front of the building. And she's gonna gather all the information for that. So thank you, Kathy.
You, you're welcome, Charlie, and I owe you that information still.
Charlie, you are, you're also offered to basically make, if we had some historic photographs to put those in the lobby. Yep. That's, uh, Kathy Rooney's gonna gather all that information for us.
I have one more quick question if I can ask it.
Go ahead, Mark.
If I can ask it.
I'll state your name for the record.
Where's the handicap spots in this, um, design?
Thank you. There's, there's one handicaps, handicap space here. There's one handicap space here, one inside, one outside. And there's also the potential to be able to get in an on-street handicap space if it would be so needed.
Glad you like it, Mark.
Right, so, wanna hear my opinion? I think you did a really good job. I've been driving through the neighborhood several times. The architecture fits right in. Most of those houses in that area are three stories in similar shape. So this will be a little bit bigger, but it's an apartment building. And I don't think it's really too huge, but I'm, I'm really impressed with how much thought went into this to make it actually fit into this neighborhood. Um, you got around the, round the corner, you have the big giant school. Um, this, in my opinion, looks a lot nicer than that. And the, I just wanted to say that I think this fits in really well. And it came down a foot, that helps a little bit, but it's really, looking at all the other buildings, they're all really tall houses there. So it's not that much, in my opinion, it's not like an eyesore or a monstrous building.
Thank you.
I'm gonna weigh in if now is the right time.
This is great.
And, um, you know, I also, I just want, I want to make clear that I think the, um, um, the project team on this has done a really thorough job of, of the task at hand that they were put to to, to make this building as, as, as good of a building as they can, right? My question remains, and I, I think I expressed this fairly clearly and o- obviously you've looked at various means of solving the building height. You've looked at putting the pil, the parking down below. Um, you've looked at changing the roof pitch, you know, say. But the one obvious thing that was not looked at was just simply reducing the number of units. And we have to put that out there, that that has something that, um, basically is a, apparently non-negotiable, uh, for, for whatever reason. Um, and that makes this building go over the zoning that is set for this area. And my thought, just in general, as a member of the planning board and trying to understand my role in that, is that the, the zoning regulations for various parts of Ashland are set by, not by the planning board, but, but by the town, voted on in town meeting. And please, Peter, or, um, Emma, correct me if I'm wrong at any point. I, I would like to be corrected if that's the case. And so those are set. And while of course the planning board can, has the, um, ability to grant, um, things above and beyond that, it seems that unless we do that only when there is a compelling reason to do so, that those regulations really don't mean anything. And there's nothing really to stop as we go through this neighborhood with other projects that, um, e- everyone can ask for that, for that height difference, simply because they don't want to reduce the amount of units. Um, and, and we would have no recourse really to say, um, no, we can't do that on that particular project because we've already done it on this one. So again, what I'm looking for is to, how do we make that? If we give an exception to the stated Ashland bylaws, I believe there has to be a compelling reason to do it. And I'm looking for that compelling reason. Designing a great building is not a compelling reason. That's what you need to do just to get a special permit. Even if it was thirty-five feet or under, you need a fantastic building to get a special permit. So I don't see where that is being met. I don't see anyone answering that question about why that should be given. And I, it, it doesn't really matter what the height of this existing building is. What matters is what is in the Ashland regulations. The one twenty-eight Main Street building is three stories. The twelve Pond Street building is three stories. And, and I, I'm just not understanding why this is, um, why this is okay. This is really a non-essential site in Ashland as far as I'm, as I'm aware. I, I think it would be, uh, you know, something like that building would be, um, an asset. It's obviously has a lo, someone's put in a lot of care, a team has put in a lot of care into the look of the building. I have no questions about that. Um, it's about us as a planning board and these regulations. What do these regulations mean to us as a planning board? So even like the one point five FAR that's been established, that's a maximum. That doesn't mean that everyone developing on a site should try to get as close as possible to it or try to go over it. But it's just a, it's just a given maximum. It doesn't mean that that's what everyone should try to achieve. So, um, so that's, that, that's my question. I don't, I don't think it has ever been, um, fully answered.
Well, I look at it a little bit, I look at it a little bit different because actually we're allowed to go to forty-five feet. The bylaw doesn't say if, if it was thirty, thirty-five, it would say thirty-five and that's it. But it says forty-five, but they just have to get a special permit to go to that. Yeah, I mean, I look at it a little bit different. Like the bylaw says you can go to forty-five feet. It's in there. But you have to, if you go over thirty-five, then there has to be, they have to get a special permit. So it's not, I don't look at it as the bylaw says you can't go over thirty-five feet. Because the town voted it in and allowed in that section to go to forty-five feet. Otherwise they would have made it, no buildings over thirty-five feet if they didn't want buildings over thirty-five feet. That's how I look at it. And the building that's there is forty-five, forty-four feet. So in that little district, right in that area, they're allowed to go to forty-five feet. They just have to get a special permit. So I look at as the bylaw is, the maximum's forty-five feet.
I, I would just say, what's the compelling reason? I mean, is affordable housing being provided here?
And, and I understand your question, but I would just say, because you were saying the bylaw says thirty-five, that's the bylaw, but the bylaw is actually, I look at it as forty-five. So and like you said, if you don't have, if you don't think they've given enough reason to go the extra ten feet or whatever they're doing, that's it. But I'm just, the way I look at the bylaw is they're allowed to go to forty-five feet. They just have to get a special permit. Like they can't go to forty-seven feet. That, that would be out of the bylaw, even if we allow, we can't even allow them to do that. So that's the way I look at it. And if you look at all the buildings around there, I don't know what the, the heights of the buildings are exactly everyone, but they're all pretty tall, pretty tall houses. That whole neighborhood's pretty tall. This is going a little bit taller and the footprint's a little bit bigger, but it is an apartment building, so it's gonna, it's gonna be bigger. And it is on the edge. It's in that district where the downtown district that was set up for these kind of things. So that's my opinion.
I'd like to try to respond.
Well, there'd be a little bit more to that. No. Because I did get this, these passes out of me and attorney general, but, but my thought was is just not just because of the height, but it was square footage and land uses of it. So I want to go back to Trish and ask her about that part of the thing, about would she want to change the land footage of it? Or the site, or would she want to, um, work on design of, of a building that fits into a mode that maybe this one doesn't? That's my question. Thank you.
I'd like to try to respond.
Yeah, go ahead, Terry.
I'd like to try to respond to Trish. Uh, Trish, we, we've got, I respect your opinion, um, and I, uh, and I don't mean to, you know, certainly not to me to argument, but I'm gonna try to answer your question. It may not be sufficient, but if we're looking at the screen right now, and I know there's a concern about precedent. I think, you know, as an attorney who, who practices and other things in this, one is concerned, well, if I make this decision here, why, what, why would present somebody else from coming and ask for the same thing? You have to look at the site and what's unique about the site and what's unique about the proposal. You can see the site now is largely, I forget what percentage it is, seventy-five percent, eighty percent asphalt and building, a lot coverage. There is no subterranean drainage system. There, it is, um, the design review committee, one of the things that, the comments that aren't showing in the report, but did, was, uh, on record at the hearings, was that they felt that this area was at, charity speaking tired, but certainly is something in need of, uh, rehabilitation and, and, uh, economic development. And that, you, you may not find that, uh, in some other site, uh, as you do here. So I, I think it's gonna be, th, if, if someone comes along and tries to rely on this as a precedent, I think there are too many unique features about the site that they, that they, that they can't piggyback on top of this to get, uh, a four-story building simply because we got a four-story building. We've got much more than that. We're providing much more. We comply with all of the dimensional controls that are set forth in the bylaw to govern mass, building mass, all of them, except the one exception that we need is height and stories. But we, we, we exceed the setback. The lot coverage, the open space, um, all of those things, the FAR, yeah, it's true. We're, we're down to one-four instead of one-five. But those are the things that are used to this, to, to, to define the volume of a building. So, um, I, I, I can only, I, I, I don't know what I can do to reassure you that you're not gonna be, uh, faced with a, a circumstance where someone's gonna look at this and say, gee, well, you did it for them. Why wouldn't you do it for us? Look at twenty-eight Main Street. Think, I, it, it, it's up now and I saw some of the finished, uh, uh, plans for that project. I believe a lot of that parking, although it may be under the building, is exposed. It's exposed. So that when you drive down the street, you'll see the building on Main, but you will see the parking lot. It'll look like a covered parking lot. In this situation here, seventy-five, seventy-five percent of the parking is, is out of sight. You know, when we have seven spaces visible from the street, and there's no, there's no, th- there's no parking there as you would see in a project like Main. Plus the fact, one of the things we looked at was a flat roof building or the next best thing, which is a manside style. I know, someone no less important than the town manager said, we don't want any manside. We've had enough manside. And I, and after the effort we went through on Pond Street, I would agree with him. And that's what's the stark difference about, I think, the design of this building. We're not relying on a manside simply to come within, uh, a thirty-five foot height limitation. I think what allowing us, allowing us the freedom to go to forty-two, forty-one feet and, and change gives you this kind of look in the roof line. And I think that's the thing that people are attracted to. And even I think you credited us with the design of the building and we think that's distinctive enough to justify hopefully the relief that we're looking for now. Thank you.
I, I'm looking, I'm looking for what, um, what this project is doing for the town of Ashland for that extra height.
Economic development.
I'd like to, I'd like to hear something about affordable housing.
Well, there is no.
I'd like to hear what the gift is, is what I would really like.
There is no, there is no affordable housing requirement in this district, but they're, they, they're taxes generated. This, 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 this could be a catalyst for other, uh, renaissance of other properties that are, uh, tired or obsolete. So there's an incentive factor, but more, if you're looking for dollars and cents, I mean, I believe, I don't know exactly what the taxes are paid in the site, but I believe they're gonna be at least quadrupled. And that's overtime. So, and plus we're, the size of these units, these are not big units. These are average of nine hundred and eighty square feet or something to that effect. These are units that fit a niche in the market for people who are looking for that, that, that size unit. So, yeah, we're satisfying, uh, we think in a, 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 a need, uh, for that type of housing that we're providing. We're providing tax revenue, uh, and I think we're doing, you know, and we're doing it in a way that, um, we don't believe it's gonna tax the, tax the city services. We think that this is gonna be a net gain for the city. And that's the benefit, I mean, that's the benefit. If, I respect your opinion that you think that it may not be enough to vote for this. But we did the best we could and we're hoping that we'll have an affirmative vote.
You had talked about the possibility of, of letting us have, um, maybe two affordable units. Is that still on the table?
Well, um, I don't think that the economics of the situation, when we talked, we had, uh, we had discussions, or my client had discussions um, with the town manager about the possibility of going to the Affordable Housing Trust to try to work out an arrangement that we had on Pond Street. Unfortunately, the, the viability of that was squashed because as we know, rightfully so, the Affordable Housing Trust, as we understand it, is engaged in trying to come up with programs to help the people who have been disadvantaged and, and severely economically impacted by the effects of this pandemic in the town. So with the now, and, and we think that that is, we recognize that in the priorities of the situation, that if there's any monies to go around, that it should be directed to those people rather than try to subsidize this project. But unfortunately, given there's only limited amount of cash, then that, we, it, uh, we couldn't do it. It just didn't work.
Do you have, uh, can, can you put up the picture of the street view of the two buildings that are there now?
Rick?
I just wanted to, do you know what's the height on the house that's there? That one. Do you know the height on that?
Uh, I don't know the heights on that. I think it's actually has, I can see it has, uh, four or five stepped up to the first floor. So the first floor is a good three, three to four feet off the ground. three, three to four feet off the ground. And then that's an older building and that's a nineteenth century building where you would have floor to ceiling heights greater than eight and a half feet, which is.
It's probably maybe around thirty-four feet or so.
Oh, thirties is what I would say.
Because I'm getting an idea, most of the houses in the neighborhood are similar to that height, little bit more, a little bit less, but they're, they're taller like that. So I guess when you're looking at this and looking at the new, this building here that's already next to it, which is what, forty, how high is that?
Forty-one, forty-one and change, forty-one and inches.
This one's forty-three. We have two feet shorter than, than this one.
So if you want to get a perspective, that's the average house is similar to that one, not exactly. And the new building's gonna be three feet lower than that.
Two feet. I'd like to add something too. If, if you, the board walked down that street and took a look in the yard of Powertunes and seen, you know, what's going on in that yard, nothing's gonna change in that neighborhood. It's actually probably an environmental hazard site for what's going on over there. If, if you people do not want change in that neighborhood, people are gonna be coming in there, opening auto body shops, mechanic shops, and causing more problems down the road for the town. So, I mean, I, I would encourage everybody to walk that street and take a good look where it's around there and see if you guys don't allow the change now, it's only gonna change for the worse.
The, the other thing too, in answer to, to Trish's question, that, that we're underestimating the, you know, the, and you may think, well, it's minor, but the insulation of a sidewalk provides the necessary pedestrian connectivity that doesn't exist now. It's not easy to go from lower Alden Street up to the center of town and without taking your life in your hands because you're traversing over a hundred and twenty square feet of open pavement with no delineation of sidewalks, curbing, or safety measures for pedestrians. That's certainly a benefit. Also, as you see here, if you go, Rick, if you look at the overall, the aerial plan, the area, you look at the aerial plan, look, you see where that building is now, that, that house is gone and our building, all of that which is now occupied by forty-one Alden Street is now, is basically open on the, on the right-hand side. Forty-one Alden is the, yeah, is the, is the, right there. That building is down and our building is setback, uh, great, has a greater setback than that building. So you've got, on that side, which is the closest to the residential neighborhood, we have the maximum setback. I think, there it is. The previous building sat there. If you could show the existing conditions plan, you'll see it.
Yeah, that's over forty-five feet.
Right. You see, there it is. Right. And then you can see where we are.
You can see the limited green space. I mean, this is all paved, all paved.
So I guess we rest our case.
Joe, are you saying something? Joe, you're muted.
I was just trying to get to the unmute button. Sorry. Um, yeah, so I guess the way in here, um, you know, my comments in the past about the thoughtfulness of this design, um, the, the fit and finish, and I think the attempt to acknowledge what's there now and the history through that design, I think it's, I think it's impressive and I, I think it's thoughtful and, um, I like it. Um, and, you know, I, I, I also give credence to, to, to Trish's comments that, you know, it, it should be, it, it should be impressive and it need be impressive because there's, there's a special permit involved. And so I, I think that, I want to give acknowledgement to that being a good point and, and being thoughtful. Um, you know, I, um, I, I mean, I, I step back and I look at this project and, and, and this project, you know, it, it represents a, a desire by somebody to invest substantially in the town of Ashland and substantially in our, in, in, in downtown. Um, and, um, I want to acknowledge that as well. Um, not only is it a substantial investment, but it's a, but it's a, it's a thoughtful, uh, design and I think a thoughtful investment. Um, you know, I, I also would, would say that, you know, uh, the, the efforts, the efforts by the team and, and the developer to, you know, to acknowledge the history and being willing to put plaques in front of the building to acknowledge that history, to put pictures in the lobby. I mean, I, I, I do think that's thoughtful. I do think, I think it's easier to look past that stuff and not everybody we talk to has an interest or willingness to do that. And so I, I, I think, I think that's a, I, I appreciate that. Um, you know, all that said, I, I also acknowledge Trish's comment about, about, about the precedent and, and, um, it, it, you know, it does concern me to, you know, to, 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 to to set a precedent and to provide her of, you know, six feet. Um, to the counter, I think Dale, your point was also well taken that actually the, the zoning allows it up to forty-five feet and this is asking for forty-one feet. So it's, the, the ask is, is in the middle of the range, of the additional range. And so, like, is this investment and the thoughtfulness of this investment, how does that weigh against, you know, how much is being asked for? You know, somebody could come in here and ask for forty-four feet, forty-five feet, right up to the limit max, right? I mean, this is through the efforts you guys have put through since our last meeting, you've, you've been able to reduce it a foot. So, um, uh, you know, I, I think, I guess last point is like, I think drainage right now, I mean, the drainage site in this neighborhood is gonna be vastly improved as a result. Another aspect of the investment that this project represents and, you know, flooding on the street and a lot of comments and concerns, no curb cut. I mean, there, there's many facets of this which I think are beneficial to the town of, to the town of Ashland. Um, and so on balance, I think that this, this project, um, it is, is a benefit to the town of Ashland. Um, and, you know, I, um, I guess I, 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 you know, I, I support this, this project.
Just a real quick, uh, comment on the precedent. I think if you're setting a precedent, this building sets a really good precedent. This was a big square, flat-roofed building that didn't fit in and we're approving it. That's one thing, but you guys did a lot of stuff. It fits in. So when people look at this and they want to go higher, if they do, which is allowed in certain areas, they're gonna look at this and say, we're gonna have to at least make this, our building look this good and fit in well, or we're not gonna get our, our special permit. So as far as setting a precedent, I think this building, because I've, I've driven back and forth there a lot lately and the design, it fits the neighborhood. I mean, there's a lot of thought. So to me, that's, you know, if, if it didn't fit in, like you said, a man's roof thing, I don't think that would work in this neighborhood because it doesn't fit in with all the houses, but they really, you guys have, have done something. So as far as the presence precedent, I think this is a good positive, positive precedent to set.
Yeah. I mean, the, the, the last thing I'd say is, you know, I, I, um, I, I appreciate you approaching the town, uh, you know, and looking to work with your affordable trust consistent with how you did for twelve pond. Uh, I, I mean, there's a limit as to how much that, the, the trust can do, um, in, in terms of things. And, and, you know, I think it is thoughtful that they're looking towards what they, what they can do in the near term with COVID-nineteen and how they can directly help people. I would still strongly, you know, say, uh, to this project, you want to put a cherry on top of this, I would love to see two units of affordable in this project. Um, I, I, I think it would be the cherry on top of this and it, it, you know, um, it would be great. Um, so I, I will say that. Um, I do think affordable housing is, is important and there's a need and, um, it, it's a challenge for communities to meaningfully address it. So, um, I, I, I'll end my comments there. Thank you.
Uh, Phil, do you have anything to say?
Um, I was just gonna reiterate pretty much what Joe just said in that, um, and that I, you know, I completely understand Trish's sentiment on it. Um, and I respect the, to a large extent that she even has a lot more expertise on a, a lot of this stuff than I do, but I also uh, at the end of the day, kind of probably align myself with what Joe is saying, uh, and I do see the benefits overall, um, for that area, for the whole town. Um, and I do, um, see that, you know, a concerted effort to, to at least try and work with us where I haven't seen, you know, in other projects with other developers sometimes. Um, so um, I, you know, I appreciate that there's been some sincere attempts to kind of take our criticisms or our, um, you know, things that we pointed out about the project and, um, come back to the drawing board with it.
So can I speak for a second? Charles Lamudo, the developer. So as we, we, at our last meeting, Trish was saying, what can you do for the city? What, you know, her concern was what's good, what are you gonna do for the town? So after that meeting, I went, met with Mike and we talked a little bit. And the thing is, this project economically doesn't support any of that. But I, I can promise you in the future that we are working on something big that's gonna have a lot more housing and it's gonna be a great benefit for the town. But it's just this project here, there, there's no more, there's no meat on the bone on this thing. When we put this thing under agreement, we went to, we had a meeting with the town, just a quick meeting, not with the planning board or anything like that. We originally had twenty-eight units designed at this project. And they let, we got asked, you know, hey, that's too big, shrink it down, maybe twenty-two units would work. We took it upon ourselves to lower the thing to nineteen units. And, you know, we made a big effort into trying to keep this thing going and working. If we, we knew from the beginning that it, you know, it was a huge problem with the low income, we would have had that all worked out. But, you know, that was just thrown on, on our lap. And honestly, this project doesn't, there's no economic money left in this thing for that.
All right. Thank you. Um, yeah, my thought.
Hey Preston, I just had one more thought. I, I can wait till after you're done.
No, go ahead.
So, um, at design review, I'd also asked if the developer, before they put up the fence in the back, could go along as they're doing the landscaping and clean up the trash piles in the back, even though some of them might not have, might not exactly be on their property, what they could reach, you know, reasonably clean up, because it's clear that these properties have been dumping on the back line. Um, certain other properties have been dumping there as well. But it would just clean up that neighborhood and they, they, you know, everybody thought it was sort of funny, but I think they agreed to do that. And that might be something, you know, it would help push other developers all over town to sort of think about the abutting properties and starting to really raise the, um, I don't know, the, the development values in the town. I, I certainly appreciate why Trisha is asking her questions because I ask the same questions. They're just usually posed from, you know, what can you do about trees and infiltration of groundwater and sequestering stormwater and things like that? So I don't know if Charlie and crew would be agreeable to that also, and it could be put into, um, your agreement with them.
How, how about this?
As long as they, real quick, as long as, if you're going on someone else's property, you'd have to have some kind of agreement or something ahead of time, right? Because if you went on, you picked up the wrong thing or you did something on their property or something happened, I think if we, I don't know, Preston, you can tell me, can we put that in our agree, our thing that they have to clean up the neighbor's property?
Well, they can go to the edge, right, of their property.
Yeah, they can go right to the edge of their property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, cleaning up someone else's backyard would seem like there'd be some legal issue.
Can, can I, can I add something to that? We, we have no problem because we, we want to clean up that whole neighborhood. Everywhere we build, we want to make it cleaner and nice. So that, to help neighbors clean or us clean some of their stuff, that's not a problem. But what I could do for the town is I'll donate a hundred and fifty trees to the town and they can plant them wherever they want. And that can be my offer to the town.
I'm sure Kathy will love that.
What size trees, Charlie?
I'll tell you later.
No, you gotta tell us now.
No, they'll, they'll be like, I don't know, two, three, four inch caliper, whatever. I'll get you a list what I can get from my nurseries and you can pick whatever you want.
Okay, that's a good offer if it's two to four inch caliper.
Yeah. No, they'll be nice street trees.
And I could say this is the second project I've worked with Charlie that he's done it on.
Yeah. What was it? Everett?
He already got planted in Everett from his project.
Yeah.
That's awesome. It's an excellent offer.
If we can keep him here for a little bit longer and see what else we can get.
The other thing too is, you know, we're gonna be back in front of the board with the Homer Ave project. And our goal, we already approached the owner of Powertunes to try to see if he was ready to sell, but he's not in the same wavelength we're on yet. But, uh, you know, down the road, it's gonna come and we'll be right there and you know, we want to clean up that neighborhood and make good things happen for the town. And who knows what's gonna happen in the next six months to year with the, with this virus and the economy? Nobody might be building anything anywhere. And, you know, this is a step in the right direction. If we, if you put this step off to the side, this whole thing might not be touched for another twenty years.
Amen.
Yeah.
Hey, well, what's next, Preston?
Uh, I think we're at the point, uh, where we could, um, potentially close the public hearing and, uh, vote on this. Um, the only thing left, uh, would be, uh, writing up the decision and the conditions. Um, so we could, um, uh, Peter, would, should we vote?
Yeah, Preston, I think at this point, you know, I think we can vote. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry. I think it's appropriate to, to, um, I think I kind of understand where the board is at right now. And I think it's appropriate to, to close the public meeting. Um, we, there's no tolling period, obviously, with the, the new state order. Uh, if the board would feel most comfortable, I can work, uh, on the next two weeks to draft the decision and to come up with some conditions as kind of mentioned in the meeting. Uh, or I would say, uh, the board could vote tonight and, uh, over the next two weeks, I can come up with, uh, conditions. Uh, and, and then the, um, the board can obviously, um, re, kind of proof that decision to make sure I, I hit everything. But I think if we, if we're gonna be cautious and keep things to a, uh, to a, a certain pace and, and flow as, as, as we have been in the past, I think it makes sense to close the public hearing. Um, and then at the next meeting, uh, review decision and then, uh, get ready uh, and then, and to take the procedural vote at that, uh, present time.
Well, we would like to know, Mr. Chairman, we would like to know, we'd like the members to go on record tonight. I understand that you might not be able to finalize it until you see a set of conditions, but at least conceptually, it would be nice to know um, if, if, if we have the necessary votes.
But my inclination is the same, uh, which is to, uh, have a vote tonight uh, that is conditional on the planning board liking the wording of the final decision, which gives us as much wiggle room as we want till, uh, the next meeting, but it also gives us a pretty solid, uh, where we think we are.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, is there any last, uh, comment from the public? I do see one person on the phone. Uh, if you dial, I believe, star six to raise your hand or star nine to unmute if you have comment, um, or if anybody else, um, is here that wants to say something. I'm gonna wait just a minute just to make sure.
Yeah. Hello?
Mark, you have one last thing?
One last thing. Yes. Let me just make sure everything here. Okay. Those, the, the agreements that you've got to come up with and the attorney there wants to make sure that it's above board and they get a chance to look at them. Will they get, will all the board and developer get to see those drafts before they actually come out in two weeks? Because, um, with this pandemic, something in the way could come up in the way that made the clock stop for a reason. So I'm making sure that everybody's on board and then get to see that the drafts, even though there may be a board delay because of the pandemic. That's it. Thank you. even though there may be a board delay because of the pandemic. That's it, thank you.
So Mark, right now, I can answer that. Right now, there's state order, there's no tolling. So, uh, the planning board is, is most likely gonna meet via Zoom, uh, in two weeks to continue on its regular procedure. Uh, but, uh, the, all expectations would be to meet by the planning board on Zoom, uh, in two weeks.
Yeah, and as far as the decision, I doubt there will be much in the way of conditions that aren't things that have already been discussed. So I, I think, I don't see any surprises coming in the conditions, um. But ultimately, the conditions are what the planning board decides, whether they're, the applicant likes it or not. You know, it's a special permit, we can put things in. If the applicant doesn't like it, they don't have to build it. Uh, I don't see that in this case, but it's, you know, that would be our.
And Pete will get that to us in advance so we can put our comments in, right, to get a final for the next meeting?
Yeah, I think by, I would say by the next week or to the late, uh, the end of next week, a draft decision can be kind of sent out to the board.
Pete, could you, could you circulate that draft to us as well?
Yep.
Thank you.
That way we can, if we missed anything or we, we see any, anything we needed to add, we can do that before we come back.
Just if we continue on, Preston, can we stop the screen share?
Oh yeah, that would be nice at this point.
Thank you.
Wow, would have got big. All right, uh, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing on, uh, the Alden Street project.
So moved, Dale.
All right, uh, so it's been moved and seconded. Uh, we'll take a roll call vote, uh, because this is remote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Oh, you're muted, Joe. You're muted, Joe.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Tricia Kendall, abstain.
Preston Crowe, aye. That passes four zero one. Uh, and then, um, uh, Peter, uh, my understanding is that this is both a special permit and a site plan review, is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. That's actually a site plan review in two special permits. One special permit is for the use of the building, which is a nineteen unit building. The second per, uh, special permit is within under section, excuse me, uh, eight point five point seven dimensional regulations of the mixed-use building. Uh, item number four, uh, regarding height, uh, within the downtown, uh, Ashen Downtown zoning district.
All right, uh, then I would entertain a motion for approval of the site plan.
So moved, Dale Buchanan.
And, and, uh, conditional on, uh, the planning board being satisfied with the final written conditions.
So moved, Dale Buchanan.
Seconded, Phil Williams.
All right, uh, roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Tricia Kendall, abstain.
Uh, Preston Crowe, aye. That passes four zero one. Uh, and then I'll entertain a motion, uh, for the special permit, uh, to approve the special permit on the use, uh, subject to the planning board, uh, being satisfied with the, uh, conditions on the, uh, approval.
So moved, Dale Buchanan.
Seconded, Phil Williams.
And roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Preston Crowe, aye. That passes five zero. And then on the special permit on the height, uh, this would be a motion to, uh, grant the special permit, uh, subject to the planning board, uh, determining, uh, planning board being satisfied with the, uh, conditions on the final approval document.
But those conditions include like, uh, offer of the plannings and everything?
Yes, th- those conditions would presumably, on all three of the documents, would include, uh, the design review recommendations, uh, the offer of, uh, the trees and, um, the, uh, you know, standard procedures during construction, uh, that sort of thing.
So moved, Dale Buchanan.
Seconded, Phil Williams.
All right, roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Phil Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
Tricia Kendall, abstain.
Preston Crowe, aye. That passes four zero one. Um, and I'd like to, uh, so we are done with this for tonight. I'd like to, as other people have said, uh, thank the applicant for a very well organized and responsive application, a very professional application. I'd also like to thank, uh, the other board members for, uh, doing a great job of analyzing and, uh, considering this, especially when I uh, thank Tricia for holding their feet to the fire. Um, like, uh, you made a better project, um, even if it wasn't exactly what you ended up wanting, but, um, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Tricia. Good job. Yep, it's okay. You gotta fight for what you believe in. I want to thank you, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you and the members for the time and, and effort you've put into this as well.
You're welcome. All right, we have, um, uh, a uh, Peter, you have something to say?
Nope, I think, uh, I think we just have to continue, uh, obviously, we have more business to be done with eighty-one West Union Street. So we close this public meeting and we can jump on to the next one.
Yes, um, so let's move on to eighty-one West Union Street. I see, uh, at least, uh, one session here with the applicant. Um, this is a continued, uh, public hearing on site plan review and special permit for eighty-one West Union Street Phase Two. Um, I believe where we left off last week, uh, there were several members of the planning board who, uh, had come to the conclusion, uh, if I'm reading it right, and I think this is what the developer felt, that they were not going to vote in favor of the project as it was, um, constituted. And so they have come back with a, shall we call a sketch plan of a, um, doing something somewhat different where they relocate, um, Building Two, uh, change a bit of what it is and eliminate Building One. Uh, if I understand from what I saw in the document that was emailed out, uh, and with that, I will turn it over to the applicant. Um, and do you, or have somebody who's going to share this screen? So everyone
Yeah, that sounds a drawing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Getting an echo.
You got, you got an echo, but I believe you can share now.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
It would help if you turned down your TV or microphone, take it away from the TV.
Hello? Can you hear me?
That's better.
Yes. There you go. Okay, um, and for the record, Pito at Berry eighty-one West Union Street. Uh, last time we met, um, we heard, uh, two major concerns, uh, one being the, the size of the project and the other being the proximity of the project or, or the building to the nearby residential. So, uh, we went back and, and looked at the site. Uh, one of the comments that was made at the last meeting was, uh, to look at the, having a building, uh, in the main, what we had is the main area of parking, kind of when you come straight, when, when you come in from the roadway. Uh, so that's what we did, we, we just put one building there, um, a mixed-use building, uh, it will have three residential units that would be on the, uh, the end of the building away from the, the, the storage building. Uh, it has one, uh, set of entryways for, uh, one of the units in there, which would be the handicap units. And then the second and third floors each would have a unit on those floors. That building would also include a little sixty-one hundred square feet of retail space. Uh, that, that building is located a little less than, than a hundred feet, uh, from the nearest residence. Um, the other main building, uh, is over a hundred and, I think forty feet or a hundred and five feet from the nearest residence. So we didn't make any changes on that, but the overall size of the development dropped by, uh, we gotta figure out final number, but somewhere in the range of fifteen thousand square feet. So that now we've got, uh, it's like sixty-one hundred square feet of retail space, which requires thirty-four parking spaces, uh, ten residential, excuse me, five residential units, which requires ten parking spaces. Uh, and the rest of it we're keeping is the same thing, that general service, that contract item, uh, with thirty-two employees, uh, so that we need sixty-nine spaces. Uh, we provide seventy-one. With the change in, in this, we don't have as much room for parking, so, uh, the seventy-one is kind of max what we can do in the nature of the parking and, and again, limits it, limits the development size. Um, we have used all spaces that are ten by twenty in compliance with your bylaw. Uh, we have also provided for two loading areas, one for each building, um, so that we're not looking necessarily for any waivers in the nature of anything in regards to the, uh, the project itself. So, um, that's where we're at. Again, we heard that the two major items of being the size of the project, and again, we reduced it by about fifteen thousand square feet, uh, basically the three floors in, in the building one. Um, each of those floors was five thousand, roughly five thousand square feet. Um, and we've moved the building, as was requested, into the main field of parking, so that now again, you're a little less than a hundred feet from the nearest residence. So, um, those are the big changes we made. Uh, you've got the site plan, which kind of depicts all that. Uh, we also had an architect look at what we could do in the nature of the architecture of the building. Uh, and I think that was the sketch that was referred to, um, from the viewpoint of that uh, front appearance from West Union Street, uh, the residential appearance you'd have in the nature of the build. Uh, we have not at this stage of the game developed, uh, beyond that, wanted to get some consensus from the board that we're heading in the right direction, uh, in the nature of, you know, reduction in the building, uh, sizes in, in location of the build. So that's the overview. Yeah, we can certainly answer any question.
Just real quick one on the, on your, uh, drawing that's on the, looks like it's the paper roll at the doctor's office, the, there's three, three parking units underneath, on the plan it shows two. Is that just a quick, because I know you're putting this together pretty
Yeah, that was the architect's rendering, there should only be two there.
Because I just want to say, I'm, I'm very impressed with what you did so far. I, I, I'd like to see the building. So that building that's on the, the building now is, is that still Building Two that you pushed back?
It's kind of a, a mix, building one and building two.
And that's gonna be
The, the residential units would be on the, the far right-hand side where those park and where the cars are.
Okay, and then the other part is?
It's a mix between the, the straight commercial, with, again, we get sixty-one hundred square feet of commercial space and, and a couple of what would be the contractor bit. All to now around the back of the building, so you won't see any, any of the bays from the front of the, from the street line.
That's good, and, because on the, because it just says mezzanine on the thing, on the, the new, uh, footprint plan you gave us.
Yeah, that's just, the architecture not necessarily coordinated, each one of those bays, which isn't the resident, excuse me, isn't the retail space, will have some mezzanine office space.
Okay.
Out the exact number yet.
I appreciate the fact that you moved things away, there's a lot of distance between the neighbors, and then you've also, uh, helped with the traffic situation too.
Okay.
One thing is, is there?
Are we on, are we giving a public comment yet?
Is there a chance to have
Mark, excuse
Site Beach
Mark. Let's do the board first.
Other board members, uh, want to comment?
I'm, I'm a little confused by the
Is there a way to share and?
Mark, Mark.
I'm a little
I'm a little confused by the sketch that was provided. Is that the front of A-one proposed?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that would be the view you'd see from the street.
So these are no longer contractor bays, is that right?
Some of them would be, but again, the bays in the doors would be in the back, back of the building.
And there's three, there's three residential units, but on that sketch, it implies
You're in the right-hand side of that building, above where the vehicles are shown.
Right, so most of what I'm seeing on that sketch i- is not what is actually, it looks residential, but what, what I'm actually seeing on this sketch, most of it is not residential, it's kind of a false front, is that a correct reading?
Probably about half of it, yeah. Probably about half of it.
Can these be presented? Can somebody present or share the images we're talking about right now?
Um, I'm working on it, hold on.
Okay.
I guess my, I have a question for Peter, I think, um, um, is this, this proposal seems so vastly different, obviously, than what we have been dealing with is all, is this a standard way of handling something like this? Um.
Uh, I mean, this is what you've asked us to do.
This is what you asked to be able to do, right? Instead of a vote last week, so.
Well, you asked us to look at reducing the project.
Correct and standard procedure in this kind of situation.
Away from where they were, which is what we've done.
So, so Trish, let me just answer that, uh, Peter, if you don't mind. Uh, I think the number, you know, the, obviously, the, the, the conceptual plan, right, that we're talking about came in midweek, um, and then Mr. Barbier, you know, Attorney Barbier, he sent over the sketch, which is obviously a sketch, uh, you know, to me yesterday, to present it to the board tonight, right? Um, if the board feels that this plan is, is, is totally different from the previous plan, which it is, uh, in some regards, and I think it's very similar in some other regards, right? It's, it's a really, it's a modification. Um, this does happen throughout time within, you know, within the planning, that there's multiple revisions, uh, to a, to a application into a plan. The biggest thing that I look at is, um, there's, if there's never a, uh, increase in the number of buildings, the number of units, the number of parking spaces, that the, the proposal is doesn't, is, is does not exceed what was first advertised by the planning, by the planning board. Now, in this case, I would say, uh, this new proposal is this new concept, if you don't, if you, if I could al- I could also phrase it as that way. Uh, in my eyes, does not exceed what the original project was advertised for. However, the first advertisement of this pla- of, of this project probably goes back to, I would say, well, actually, the special permit goes back to December, I would say, in that time period, maybe, uh, right at the new year. Um, if it's appropriate, I believe, yes, we can re-advertise the project. Uh, in my eyes, it's most likely just an addendum or updated application or a, you know, addendum to the original application, and they still hold their foot, um, uh, I would say they still hold their space at the date of the original application that was filed with the town clerk, which is really only in regards to the site plan, uh, approval process. The special permit makes new buildings go back to, I, I, I do now remember, it is pretty much January one. Uh, so we can make that decision as, as this moves forward. I think tonight, the conversation needs to the conversation needs to be surrounded by this concept plan and i- i- and what are the reactions from the planning board members to this new conceptual plan, which really looks to to shrink the project, obviously with the elimination of what was building one and then the relocation of what I'm going to call, well, I was going to say really it's the elimination of building one and building two from the original from the previous plan. And the the new, I would say, placement of this conceptual building that we're looking at, which was a sketch plan and the placement of this building, I would say. So I would say, Trish, you're right on point, you know, should we readvertise? It's not the worst thing in the world. And we can do that if the board desires to.
And so the real question now is what is the the board's reaction to this? Are they, is this something that we can make work? Is this something where they're not doing enough? What do people think? I think it's possibly will make it work. It's a vast improvement. Without seeing all the details yet, I mean, but just looking at the footprint.
I mean, for me, it's it's so hard to to judge. I mean, yes, great that we're in the terms I've used before, being a lot more kind to the houses that were there, that that's that's great. That's huge. But on the other hand, we're creating kind of a sea of concrete or asphalt where those parking spaces now are. So and the the depth of the building. I I don't know, everything seems a little obviously rushed, so it's hard to kind of, it's hard for me to say, is this going to be a process that this project's going to be designed in planning board versus have complete project put before us that we can actually talk about? So it it's 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 hard to to comment on. I mean, I appreciate the the look of trying to try something to really come into with fresh eyes. But it's almost like it's it's very raw for coming into planning board, so. I'm just not sure what to do with it.
It it certainly doesn't feel like a complete application to me.
Yeah, and Peter, can you jump, you know, Tony Barber, obviously, is Peter Matt the town player? You know, I think I think can you believe, you know, just kind of, I, you know, after a conversation I had with you, obviously, yesterday. And I think the main goal for you and your client would be to kind of just to kind of get the get the planning board's reaction of the new footprint or the new location of the building. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to go ahead and and, you know, pay our architect and pay engineer, we want to kind of consensus that this layout, this concept works before we spend tens of thousands of dollars to have plans done over the next couple of weeks.
So just to kind of move the conversation along, does any of the board planning board members want to comment on the new location of the building?
Yeah, so I I I do think that I do think that this does attempt to address the comments that we made that were made at the meeting last week. And I do think it is. It is definitely. As Tricia puts it, kinder to the neighbors. I I guess the the hand the hand drawing that was just getting presented, that is intended to be a concept for the building that is now closest to the entrance positioned. Is that what that is intended to be related to or?
Exactly.
Okay, yeah. But it's still intended to be kind of a bay concept. As Tricia said, it's kind of a faux like residential look on on a building that has that's going to intended to be commercial bays with a couple residential units, right?
Right, well, we're intending to put residential bays on the right side. Handicapped on the first floor. And then a s- a second and third floor of residential on the far right side. And I don't know if you have the engineering drawing that shows the new layout, but Dale had made the comment about, and I think actually Trish did about, you know, could we be relocating and getting things further away? And then the I think one of the final comments was, you know, are we going to, if we're going to do this, then are we going to do something that's, you know, pretty significant? And that's why I went back, talked with everybody, detained and said, look, we have to do something significant and we thought this was real significant and we did the front of the building in this way, the architect did, so that from the street we had that more of a residential curb appeal, but Trish is right. It's a false front, but the the in part on the third floor on the left side. But the windows actually on the left side will actually be office windows, really, actually that will go into the mezzanine.
I'm just just to clarify my comments, the 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 term foe was not intended to be negative or derogatory, guys, like just I I'm just trying to under- understand the the application of that drawing to kind of this new concept. So so I I agree that what we have is very rough and very early. I I do think is I I do think what you've laid out is a meaningful attempt to address the comments at the last meeting and like, I think that's kind of where I have to stop my comments, right? Because I think you guys are, you know, there's a lot of details to kind of pin pin out and move forward with, but like, I do think I do think it addresses some of the biggest gravest kind of concerns about the scope of this project on this site.
I I think one thing we need to note, though, too, in with the with the taking away of the first of building one is to really understand the nature of of mixed use. So right now, we have these two large buildings, but there's only five residential units in it. So what makes something mixed use, you know? I I just think that should come into that should be a question now. Is is five units a mixed use site?
Personally.
Of use.
Yeah, personally, I would see rather see more commercial than residential. A lot of the buildings, we're pushing them to put more commercial in. A lot of the ones we've approved, we try to get and put more commercial in. Because it's advantageous to the town. Less of a.
I just think it's an understanding of what the covenant is and what is what is supposed to be in the in this site. And and sticking to what that we feel that means. So and what then how that becomes then the nature of this community? Is it? Is it really a commercial site back there with a with just a a couple people stuck in as residences or does this really start to meld with not only the look of the neighborhood, but the social structure of the neighborhood, which is also part of a spec- one of the conditions of a special permit? Not just the look, but the social structure, which is something I ta- I talked about last time. So that's kind of my question, like, is is the mixed use, is it really mixed use anymore? Or is it token misuse, mixed use?
I think this is social distancing.
Yeah, well, well, I answer that, but I mean, that was from the viewpoint of the building too is is in discussions with Peter and council, the requirement was, you know, having two units in a building, so that unit, the the big building on the right hand side of the site has always only had two units in it. And I believe that the analysis, at least from a legal perspective and in the zoning is that this qualifies as a mixed use. Now, we can talk about the individual uses when we present law plans, we'll show you how that all is. But again, from the viewpoint of determinations and requirements, mixed use, I think we meet the bylaw requirement.
I just want to get where we were last two weeks ago, saying that this doesn't fit the neighborhood, that this doesn't fit the social structure of the neighborhood, which is also part of that special permit.
Okay, I didn't remember the comment. I'm sorry about social structure. I did remember and have respect for and tried to show you in this plan your most significant comments, I thought, about being friendly to the neighbors. I didn't, I don't remember the social aspect of it, but I mean, I understand your comments and I'm sure we'll be talking about them. But I think that you'll see that we added some more retail to this with the hopes of being able to generate some other types of users in that front building. And and we are still committing to doing improvements of the landscaping that we talked about in the front, because now without a building there at one somewhat buffering the storage building, you know, we imagine that that front planting that we have had talked about a little bit last week and agreed to do with the you know, elimination of the dry under, we're still, we've saved that space still to do that, and maybe that has to be you know, taller trees now or something to, you know, take the scale off the building next door. So I appreciate you looking at, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I mean, I I think there's opportunity here. It's just, I just feel like I'm reading into it a lot. And and I'm not sure that's appropriate for me to read into what the what it might become instead of being presented as what it is and being able to talk about it that way. That's my fear. I'm reading into what what this could be versus actually what it is.
Do you mean, what do you think about the building itself roughly?
Well, it's on the one hand, it looks more potentially fitting in with you know, with Ashland, let's say. But on the other hand, you know, is that what both buildings look like? Is it just the one building? Is it really all just a you know, can I go in those doors that that are shown there? Are they are they false doors? Is this become kind of an active community or is it really someplace that if I live in the back, if I'm going to go visit somebody in the back, do I really have to be watch out for being run over by a contractor truck on my way back there? Like, I can't really get a sense of what it is, you know, so like, so it's like I've always thought there was potential in combining a mixed use of something more you know, like a contractor bay, those type of services with residential, but now the balance seems so out of scale. And I I just, I don't know. I feel like I'm imagining what it could be when I when I really don't know what what it is.
Yeah, no, we've definitely got a detail at home.
Yeah, but that also gives us something to think about while we continue through the process. And yes, those front doors you can get in them because those front doors on the left side, those will all go into, that'll be like the front entry. So if it happens to turn out to be that we can find a retail customer, they have access to come in their front door, have an office on the first floor and have their area in the back where they could be doing whatever they're doing. There will be in terms of pedestrian access, there is a crosswalk that will come off the main road and then cross to go in front of this entire building. And then we were imagining we would probably be asked to make sure that we could walk to the back building. So we would walk across along the guardrail there, we put in another area where you could walk out to the back. And to answer your other question about the back building, having cut out basically fifteen thousand square feet of opportunity, I have to be careful now of of costs and things driving this higher, so I was not intending to make the back building where it's much more hidden and not facing the street at all. It was not my intention to make it look like this because of the loss of the, you know, fifteen thousand square feet that I gave up in the front in order to try to, I think, you know, work and, you know, get closer to what I think you guys wanted as far as, you know, protection of the neighbors there.
Have a quick question if the green space, has that gotten less or more or about the same?
We don't have final numbers. It certainly won't be less, but we I can't give you the final numbers.
It does feel like you still suffer from the problem of having a sea of asphalt. I know that's in large part due to trying to work around the odd shape of the wetlands, but anything you could do to reduce that effect of this site would be a huge improvement.
The problem there is that we have lot now, that's why we had the parking lot in the back and out of respect for, you know, the board's position on protection of the neighbors. Th- this was one of our major concerns of trying to push it back into the back. So now when we push it back there, we still have a need for parking and look, we have to fit eight or nine spaces in the front there. And it it does make it difficult with the the triangle and the and and the lot and the way the lot's laid out. It makes it very difficult. We thought the most important thing to do, though, was to get things away from the residential area. It seemed like that was paramount.
Yeah, it's a it's a kind of a weird little layout. The whole property is just very hard to do certain things that I.
Too many drugs.
Me, just looking at this, the footprint looks way better. And you know, space, and I'm sure you guys are going to keep in mind all our comments about building heights and you know, all the stuff we said on the other ones, you're not going to build a really high building because it's back further, but it it's this looks a lot more workable to me.
It's actually the grade back there too, Dale, is about three feet lower. So the front building where it started at its slab at two fifty two, we can get this one to start at a slab of about two forty nine.
And are you are you maxed out on the parking here?
Yeah, pretty pretty much.
Remember.
Seventy one. There might be a few more here and near the end. When you go to the final detail, something might find a couple more spaces, but you're not getting much more than that, which that, of course, limits how much retail and commercial you can have because of the parking.
And that was that the, remember, we reduced the size of the parking spaces on the last plan?
Yeah, th- this, you know.
Well, because my my point is, I'll tell you the point real quick, that little triangle in the front that's behind the houses.
Yeah.
If you could straighten that parking line out and still fit, straighten it out a little bit and have some green space in front of the, you know, at the between the house and the parking spot. I mean, if you if you just throwing out ideas to get
Yeah, yeah.
Less asphalt if you know, because we're amenable to making the spaces smaller before, so if you could do that again and and free up some more green space that.
Yeah, that and I think, Dale, that's a great point, but that's going to be the trade off and Trish is also concerned about the residential, the mix, so it's going to be how many spaces are we going to need to add residential versus if we're trying to get some different uses, we need the space for the retail, so that we're going to have to work that.
And and as far as the residential to commercial mix, to tell you the truth, you're meeting what they said, you're meeting requirements you need to in each building. This is kind of a new thing. So if you put a whole bunch of residential in there and it doesn't work that, you know, I mean, so to me, I look at as this is kind of an experimental thing, so you you're going to see how it works and if it works well, then it works well, but if it doesn't and you have a whole bunch of residential in there that you can't do anything with or or whatever, then so I see, you know, that's.
And that's complicated more by the fact that these going to be condo units. So, you know, if they'll go vacant, it much more difficult to deal with than, you know, one building where it's all rental and the same owner and everything else.
Well, I'm 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 my mind, mind in my mind, I think that no matter if you build it, someone will buy it. It depends on you might, you know, your financially, it could be economically, you know, price different, whatever, but I think people will buy it, but this is kind of a new thing, especially for Ashland. Like I said, in California, they do this a lot. And it seems to work okay. I don't know. I haven't talked to anybody that actually developers or how that's working and I don't know if they're renting or selling them all that, but this is kind of a a new thing, so I it the the mixture of residential to commercial, I I actually prefer more commercial. And I'm, I think, looking at this is going to alleviate some of the traffic problems. Not all of it, but where this is situated, there's a big school and the traffic and all that stuff. I think this footprint helps that on the positive side. It's still going to be a problem. You know, there's still going to be issues, but compared to having another building there with all those houses and and, you know, condos and extra offices and stuff, I think this this is a route in the right direction. One of my thoughts is that if you're having just a few units in each building.
One of my thoughts is that if you're having just a few units in each building. It feels like you're building unit, residential units for the people who are. Also getting the contractor bays or the commercial spaces, so you're, you, it's actually work housing. Uh, and if, if that's how it works out, I think that's great. Um, one concern that I have is that the more residential you have in here. Uh, the more you really need green space to make it livable. And the sea of asphalt es- approach makes it a lot harder to support. A sense of community for residential, in my sense.
And, and to that point, um, and it kind of worked out with this plan on the far right side where we're putting the residential. So there'll be a handicap for the person will park underneath according to the handicap unit and then the two. Uh, and, and the third floor on the right side, you'll see there's gonna be areas.
Yard space.
Yo, and then we're gonna provide access to some green space that's in the back. So that the residential portion, those three units on the far right side, will also have some balconies looking out into the wetland. And patio for the handicap person on the first floor, uh, right there on the right side, so we're, we're. Thinking that we're gonna be able to find ways to integrate areas where those people. Um, can, um, if they're not a- associated with an ownership or. One of the bays, they'll be able to enjoy some of the uh, the green space on the right side of the building.
And I also for a, I'll make a comment, I noticed on the building three, you eliminated the Key West stairway that went. Looked like, right?
Yep.
I think they had eliminated that last week.
Yeah, we did, we eliminated, correct.
Yes, so, so building three is untouched at this time.
Yep.
From what you presented a couple weeks ago.
That's correct. We understood the most significant comments to be. Um, this, the drive under. Um, entry in the front building and the uh, proximity to the neighbor and instead of. You know, that's why I had asked, you know, what you guys were thinking about distances to lot lines when you were talking about changing. The requirements for commercial to residential, because I was trying to have an understanding of what was okay and instead of. Trying to come up with something on my own, it seemed to make most sense to just redo it, get it out of there, lose a building. Uh, it's a significant. Do not have that space, but it seemed like the thing that needed to happen right now.
I, I think the tricky part is, and as I tried to express it before, that this is a. These are potentially really different building types, you know, integrating something. You know, residential, commercial, contractor bays, if you were thinking of contractor bays as separate from commercial, which is what I'm starting to get. Because it, you need to treat that whole site as in one voice, in one, you know, the last thing we need is. The storage facility, the houses, and now two build, two big buildings back there that have nothing to. Each other, you know, so you're trying to create some kind of unified. Character back there. That doesn't mean the buildings have to be identical. So it, it continues to be an interesting but very difficult design problem, and I think. Need to go into it being aware of that, that it's not something. That you can just put this false front on it. Well, and there's nothing really wrong with the false front, again, like, like Joe said, I don't mean that in a, in a bad way, but. It's not, it's not as easy as just putting a wrapper on something. I, it's gonna be harder than that. It's gonna be a harder problem to solve. So, um. So I just think you need to be aware, if you're pursuing it further, the complexities of the problem of bringing these type of programs together. And forming a community back there. That isn't just a back alley, you know, because I don't think Ashland as a whole is interested in that and. You know, putting a back alley back there with some buildings that eh, no one sees them anyway. I, I don't think that's where we're going. So, um, uh, it's just, it's just a hard problem. I, I don't know, personally, I don't know how to solve it. It, it, it would be an interesting. Problem to work on, but I don't have that. It's not like I have an answer that I'm not, that I'm withholding from you. I don't know what the answer is. It's an interesting question.
Yeah, no, I appreciate exactly what you're saying, and I think that one of the things that made the last plan difficult and everybody just. Looking at it is, okay, so we were asked originally, how are we gonna make the transition from storage? To a building one, to then building two, building three, and trying to meld into like this house is all in the front. Well, building three is, so, and I'm not trying to say, oh, it doesn't matter because it's in the back. But it is pretty far in the back, and I'm not trying to diminish any neighbors or any of those, anything like that. But I think it does help the transition a lot now because now the two houses, Ferris. Montequella and, and actually Marcus are kind of standing. On their own, Mr. Marcus obviously still has the building in his backyard, but it's a hundred feet away. And I'm certainly um, conscious of screening and stuff on that area and can talk about that. But I think that whole idea of how does it melt together with giving up building two, I think makes it. A little bit easier. I'm hoping the board will think that too, but I understand you need to see. This further through, and this, this drawing is, you know, really just a first pass by an architect. Which, as soon as it was done and he texted me the picture, I was like, I, I think that's it. It looks, you know, we obviously have to evolve it, but the look of it. I think it looks, I think it looks awesome as a starting place.
Uh, this is, it's keep in mind that as much green space as you can squeeze out of this thing is gonna go a long way because. Like you said, that's good. You put, I noticed that, you put aside patio area and some yard for some of the residents there. But the way I look at it, because I lived in California and they did this in California, it's, it's a different kind, it's, you know, it's a community, but. It's a different kind of person that lives in a situation like this. So it's not, you can't go by your typical family. That's gonna move in here and want the playground and all that. This is a different, it's someone that works all the time and. And just goes to work and comes back and then later they'll sell it to someone else when they start a family or whatever. So it's a really a different type of. Of community. And some of the people that buy the bays may buy the apartments because that works for them. And that's what some of them do too, in the ones that I've seen. Like I said, I haven't talked to people that live there or developers or anything, I just see it. Around where I live and what they were doing. And it seemed to work, and it just seemed like it's the, the type of person that's gonna move there. If, if they want a playground and a bunch of green space, they're not gonna buy, buy. But there's a lot of people that'll work, that'll live on the thirty-fifth floor of a building. Because that works for them, and this, you know, on a big giant building downtown somewhere, and it's okay because they got a nice view. Yeah, this is a different type, a certain type of person, and that is gonna rent it or buy it, I'm sorry. Buy it, it's gonna be the kind of person that realizes they're living in with a bunch of contract bays and a parking lot.
They know what they're buying into.
Yes. So that, and, and that, and then they are giving, you know, it looks like you're giving the, building three. I don't see any greens, anything, they'd have to walk somewhere to go do something, but that. New building that's over there, I see that those three units could be, you know, there, there's some green space and some. Like you said, balconies now, they can have a balcony out the back that kind of, you see the other building, but you also see all that wetlands out there too. So I, I'm, uh, my point, I guess, is that just, the people that are gonna live here is, it's a different type of community, it's different, they know. What it is and they, they move in there knowing that. And there's a, there's a market for everything, I think, because. It's, it's not tried around here. I haven't seen, I don't know around here how many people are doing this. I'm sure people have done it. In Massachusetts and New England, but it's in our town, I haven't seen this.
Yeah, and I, and I don't, I don't disagree with that, you know, um, I don't mind it being something. Different, it just has to be still done well.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, um. And I just don't have the answer about how that's done or done. You know, in a place like Ashland versus done a Venice Beach, California, you know, those are two totally different styles, so. Um. So it's, it's a challenge.
And for me too, I would like to see the final, you know, the renderings, the drawings, how everything's gonna look and. Whatever, I know this is, you put this together in a couple of weeks, so I appreciate that, but. I'm not, I'm not just saying, yeah, let's go with this. I, I'm just saying this, the way this is set up is so much better than the other way. The other one, the last plan they had. I think it can be workable, some tweaks and some thought.
Thank you.
What are you thinking, Joe?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, 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 I mean, I think, like, like I said, I think this is a, a big step in the right direction and like. I, I think this can work. I think, you know, I, like I said, I think that's where I gotta stop, like, we gotta see. See it evolve further, but um, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's a meaningful step towards. You know, addressing the, the, the comments that we made last week, so.
And a big thing would be like when you're, you know, I know you're trying to, trying not to put too much money and spend all this money, a big thing would be. Right off the bat, if you've had those. Three D, three D views with the buildings and the houses around it, from all the different angles, like from the drone. Angle and stuff, because that really, that's what kind of pushed me over. The other plan was this, when you finally see that, you see it on paper and it's like, oh, there's some space. Then you see those three D drawings and it's like, oh my god. You know, this guy's living in your basement, his house is in your basement. Now, so if you, if, if you can see those drawings right off the bat, that's gonna help a lot, I mean.
Well, there you go.
Because you can see the distance, and to me, the, you know, distance is size gets smaller, the farther away, further away it is, the smaller it gets, so. And actually, from those houses now, there is a little strip of area in there where, you know, they can see the wetlands. So they want a bunch of screening in there, but I mean, there's, it's, it's just better with the space, I think. I can agree with, I agree with Trish, we need to see. You know, how that, and what's it gonna look like. We know what building three is gonna look like, because that's there. And then, but we need to see how that other one's gonna look. You know, all the more details. And like I said, green space, green space, if you can put as much green space. In there as possible, that will help. Even to, even to reduce the parking space sizes, you know, to squeeze. Few feet here, a few feet there, a chunk here, a chunk there. It, it, every little bit's gonna help.
Okay.
Sounds like homework.
Bill, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, sorry, I, um, I think it's like, uh, you know, obviously like a pretty significant like pivot, uh, so I was pretty impressed to. See that. Again, I mean. Back to some kind of what I said earlier, like, I think, I mean, Trisha has so much more expertise on this kind of stuff, and she's saying, you know, I don't exactly know what the answer is. Like, I will pretend that I know the exact answer is, but I, I certainly think that this is a huge shift in the right direction. Um, so, um, happy to see that. I think that there's, you know, there's. We're on a good path uh, from where we were the last time we, we got together.
And then anybody that knows, listens to me knows that. My, I, it has, the, the developer has to make it feasible to, if. I mean, we can't force them to make it so a bunch of happy families move. It's, it's gotta be to them, they've gotta be able to sell those. So I think. That to me is more on their shoulders rather than us trying to make it so that it's.
Their potatoes?
It's a, everybody loves it, everybody wants to move there. It's more of them being able to sell their product.
Yeah, I think this is, um. A big step forward. Um. I was probably one of the few planning board members that probably could have been convinced to vote for it previously though, so I don't know if. Useful person to comment on this. Um, I really appreciate, um, the. Independence of the board members uh, being assertive on this. I think that, um, that shows a very strong and healthy board. Um. I would also encourage the developer to consider. Um. Doing this uh, as a new submission, especially depending on the time. Um, and uh, considering that we're going to be having, I expect we're having a change in the. Board makeup coming up. Um. Following the June twenty-third election, uh, assuming that June twenty-third is the date the town settles on. Um. In the past, when we've had situations like this, um, the board has said, uh. It's okay to submit a new submission, uh, we're willing to accept. Uh, any materials that were generated, any reviews that were done as part of the previous submission. Uh, as part of the new submission, and we're usually willing to uh, waive the fees. Uh, for the submission that were. Fees that had been paid with the previous submission, um, excluding uh, the cost of re-advertising. Um, and that, that would, that would give you a fresh start as far as, you know, who's missed meetings and all of that. Um, and it really puts the whole, the, the, the whole thing on a, a new fresh footing. Um. So it's something I think the applicant should consider.
I don't think we have a problem covering the, the cost to advertise and, and send out letters again to, you know, but. I mean, I think we gotta keep this thing moving forward. Our concern is, is exactly that timing and if, and if. You know, we had to start the whole process again in July, then you're talking another three months, you're not starting, starting this project until next spring. And that's something at this stage of the game, given everything we've tried to do and move forward with the board, uh, that we really can't have, so. Again, I think in probably in two weeks, we'll have uh, good detailed plans. Um, that we can have the, the serious discussion on.
Um. Yes, depending on how the timing of things works.
You gotta re-advertise.
At some point, you may need to consider that.
Okay.
You know, given the fact that you gotta advertise, maybe looking at a month from now, so we get the plans for you in a couple weeks. And you got some time and maybe we sit down with Peter before the meeting and everything else, or a month from now, we probably have some good uh, feedback.
If I can jump in here, Peter, I can, I concur with you, I think if, uh. You know, obviously, if this is a conceptual plan, you know, and, and we can talk offline about this. Uh, I think it probably does make sense to re-advertise, probably the cleanest thing to do. Uh, for you as the applicant, as this moves forward. Um, and then, you know, I think coming back in a month gives you an ample amount of time, not rough. Uh, to work with an architect and to work with engineer to submit some new plans, you know, and, and that would also give us time. Uh, to review those plans leading up to the meeting, uh, instead of receiving plans within twenty-four hours. So I think that's probably the best bet, and I think that's where my, that's what my professional experience is telling me is the best thing to do. Um, regarding the board and the makeup of the board, Peter, Bart, Mr. Above, you know, Attorney Bob Barry. You know, you and I have discussed if there is a, well, you know, the board makeup changes. Um, that possibility, uh, of a re-advertise that may occur. However, you know, I want to be upfront and clear with everybody before we make our next step. So as long as you know that, and, 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 uh, and I from the town represented that to you, I think that's the number one thing. And if that situation, uh, comes up, uh, on, you know, that, that, I just wanna make sure it's on the horizon for all of us. Uh, regarding that situation, uh, and, and therefore, if we have to cross that bridge, we'll cross that bridge when we get here. Uh, after the, the town election.
All right, uh, there are no other, uh, board members who wanna comment, um. Uh, there's some public comment. Um, I see Mark has his hand up, uh, you unmute yourself.
Okay, yes, Dr. Sony. Now, we were, the, the board went through this before about site review, site plan going back, back and forth. And now it's being understood a little bit better, saying a month or so down the road because of maybe town elections on the, um. June twenty-third. I want to ask. Through the, um. Chairman. Through to the Attorney Bob Barry and. The designer, Mr. Lipinski, Lipinski, how much work would that have him to do? The designer, Mr. Lipinski, Lipinski, how much work would that have him to do? To get, catch up, to get newer things, to understand what you guys are asking the, the attorney of Bernie and. His developer to do, but he's got to go back to the drawing board, do the same thing. And yet a clock may stop in the middle because of, um, anything that could happen with a change of board. So how can you promise, say, like in a promise, say, and it's going to happen? To work and get a site review going if things delay in the middle? I want to ask that first, how much work does Mr. Lipinski has to do? I want his answer first uninterrupted. And then the attorney from there uninterrupted and then back to the board. Thank you.
Paul Lipinski, Grady Consulting, um. We could. Probably have most of this site plan set ready within two weeks. Um, a big part of the, the rear of the property will not have to be. Uh, well, there's not as, as much work in the rear half of the property. Most of it is focused on, on drainage, um, utilities. Uh, on that fir- front half of the site. Um, so if we're able to get our set together, uh. Uh, I'm confident we could have a set, a presentable set somewhat final, uh, ready for the board. Within two weeks. Um, so if we do something within the next meetings in a month, then that gives you guys plenty of time to. Review everything. Um, that gives, uh, both Peters time to coordinate, uh. In the next couple of weeks, uh, so within two weeks, we, we could have a set ready to, ready for review.
In that, in that process, I would just urge you not to, uh. To question other assumptions you've made in the same way that you've now questioned the site, you know, that. You know, are the buildings is, is eighty two feet or eighty two point five feet, like the, the magic number with these things, you know, what? You know, there has to be some give and take between the buildings and the site instead of just moving these same rectangles around. Right? And as part of, as far as the design process and the site. So yeah, the site, the site plan could, you know, maybe happen in. Um, in two weeks, but it's all dependent on actually what the buildings do as well. But I would just be very hesitant. Um, you know, when you turn this back to the designer to say, hey, this is it, this is our rectangle. It's this or nothing, you know? Um, you know, I see that little corner chopped off of that one building and I'm like, what is that about? You know, that little teeny corner chopped off, you know, so it's that kind of, there's got to be some more play in here. So just be careful of not getting stuck in that one zone again, which I think just is, it's so detrimental. When you're looking at a tricky site like this and a tricky program, everything about it is tricky. So you got to let that flexibility just happen and, and, and let them, let, let the. Let it get worked out in the process. As soon as you nail down one thing and says, I can't change it. I, I think you get locked into something that doesn't work, at least doesn't work from our point of view. So I'd say to be careful with that.
And to remember, take all our, our comments over the last month that you know we are concerned about. The height and the design of the building and the green space and all that. I'm sure you're aware of all the stuff we've been pushing.
Yes. Good, thank you. All right. Um. I think that's probably about what we have for tonight. Uh, Kathy, you're muted. Kathy, you need to unmute.
She wants a tree plan.
Yeah, besides the tree plan, I'm just curious if this is going back to design review.
I would, I would think since it's a new building, that at least the new building. And, um, the, the major changing in landscaping, yes, designer review would need to have a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just to jump in, I think it's appropriate to just continue this out until, uh, May fourteenth. Uh, that would be the, within the next month.
Yeah, I think that makes sense as well. Um, I think we're probably ready to do that, uh, now. Uh, does anyone have any last thing they need to say tonight before May fourteenth? Are you ready to go? I don't see anything. But you're welcome.
How are you, are you handling, uh, timing and decisions by the thing? Or do you want a extension from us?
I think. I would just assume since I believe I have the authority as chair to. Say the clock isn't ticking, that the clock isn't ticking and we don't need an extension unless, Peter, you disagree.
Want to do, we'll give you, if you want it for a week after your, when we're meeting again, that's fine. I don't care.
Um, I'll, I, I. I may consult with council just to kind of figure it out. Uh, it may make sense just to have a, a, a simple continuance. Because it's in, you know, it's an agree, it's agreement here. We can just have something for the file, you know, and, and that's all it is, a sheet of paper.
Yeah, just, just let me know what you want to do.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, just, just sent an email to Peter asking for an extension on the, the time to consider until May twenty first. And we will continue this till May fourteenth at, shall we say, seven thirty?
Uh, yes, please.
Yeah, and currently that's past the, uh, the end of the. State of emergency, though I don't think anybody's anticipating that it won't be extended. So, uh, probably on Zoom again, uh, we shall see. Um. So I need a motion to continue this till May fourteenth at seven thirty.
So moved Dale Buchanan.
All right, uh, that was moved by Dale and seconded by Phil. Uh, let's have a roll call vote to continue.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. That passed us five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And with that, I think that is everything that we have for tonight. Uh, is there anything else as far as member reports or administrative matters?
Uh, no, I have no updates, uh, from speaking from the planning office. Uh, I think, you know, it's great to get one case off the, off the, uh, off the workload and. And I'll look to start drafting up a decision, uh, getting out to everybody, uh, next week. And we'll kind of continue on with all matters. Uh, if you do need to contact myself or Emma, please give me a call or shoot me an email. Um, as we all kind of work through the, um, the new state of emergency, I would say. So. At the next meeting though, we will be meeting on the twenty eighth. Uh, no, I'm sorry, the twenty third, right? Uh, and we do have to hear a public hearing for two zoning changes. Uh, one is a correction within the definitions and one is the typo within the bylaws regarding the design review committee. That Emma has found. Uh, and those are the two things. So it should be a fairly simple meeting. And then we'll obviously review the decision and, uh, and move forward.
All right, um, with that then, is there a motion to adjourn?
I moved that we adjourn this meeting at nine fifty four P M.
Second.
All right, uh, let's have a roll call vote.
Dale Buchanan, aye.
Tricia Kendall, aye.
Williams, aye.
Joe Ruberton, aye.
And Preston Crowe, aye. Thank you and good night.
All right, be safe everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Hi.
Good night, everybody.